Monotollages.
No problem.
I got stuff with that job.
Again, the meeting is being recorded and anyone who stays is consent, has consent to be recorded. Can we all rise?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, without borders, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We just stay standing for just a moment. We have an officer who has battling cancer right now, and so why don't we have a moment of silence for all of our emergency first responders? Okay, first item on the agenda is a public comment on agenda items. Okay, I don't see any public comment. We also have guests this evening. We have a presentation on the Second Amendment.
They're here?
Yes, they're here.
Oh, okay.
Did you want us to start off already?
I'm sorry?
Did you want us to start already?
Yeah. Here are educational sessions, so.
So just bear with me here. Got some.
Look, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I just have to sort of. So I want to start with introducing myself. My name's Alicia Rousher. I'm New York County Coordinator for Gun Owners of America and the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance Movement that we're working on the whole state here. So I want to touch some points here and just refresh everybody's memory. You know, the U.S. Constitution says a Second Amendment says a well-regulated militia is unnecessary to the security of a free state, the right of the people to keep and bear arms, and that shall not be infringed. Article 1, Section 21 of the P.A. Constitution says the right of the citizens to bear arms in defense of themselves and the state shall not be questioned. The right of the people to keep and bear arms is further protected from infringement from by state and local governments under the 10th and 14th Amendments. So I want to introduce an ordinance of New Freedom Borough, York County, Pennsylvania, to establish a borough as a Second Amendment sanctuary municipality prohibiting certain actions and the use of borough funds in ways that are inconsistent with the Second Amendment to the Constitution of the United States, permitting certain restrictions on gun ownership and possession, and authorizing enforcement as well as imposing penalties for the violation thereof. The title of this ordinance shall be known as the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance or Say-So. Therefore, the right to keep and bear arms is a fundamental individual right that shall not be infringed. Local governments have legal authority to refuse to cooperate with state and federal firearm laws that violate those rights and to proclaim a Second Amendment sanctuary for law-abiding citizens in their cities and counties. Notwithstanding any other law, regulation, or rule or order to the contrary while acting in their official capacity, show knowingly and willfully participate in any way in the enforcement of any unlawful act regarding to personal firearms, accessories, or ammunition. Utilize assets, borough funds, to engage in any activities that aid in the enforcement or investigation relating to an unlawful act in connection with personal firearms, accessories, or ammunition. This ordinance does not regulate lawful ownership, possession, transfer, or transportation of firearms, ammunitions, or components thereof. And for those of you, if you don't know, an unlawful act shall consist of any federal, state act, or law which restricts an individual's constitutional right to keep and bear arms, including taxes and fees, bans, registration and tracking, limit the use of firearms, accessories, and ammunition, other than fully automatic firearms, which is prohibited by federal law. Except within PFAs and criminal statutes, this does not pertain to them because they are already prohibited by the law to not have a firearm. So in this, the penalties that would be listed, fine no more than $600 in 30 days if somebody would violate the ordinance is all we would, you know, ask, and I critique it based off of your code for your borough there. Yeah, so exceptions does not apply to any person prohibited from possessing a firearm. Does not permit permission possession or permit possession on locations prohibited by federal law, meaning like government facilities, schools, stuff like that. Does not pertain to this. Does not apply to a PFA or criminal statute. Right now, we have eight out of 67 counties in Pennsylvania that have worked on this ordinance or resolution at 13 townships and four boroughs. We have been endorsed by Stephanie Burrowitz and Aaron Bernstein from the U.S. House, or the Pennsylvania House, I mean. So the Say-So purpose is to send a clear message to politicians or political pressure on elected officials, saying that gun owners will not accept gun control that infringes on their constitutional right of the self-defense. So we are just trying to add guidelines to strengthen the laws that are in place currently.
Does anyone have any questions from council or from the audience?
Is it okay if I remove this?
Sure.
How about now? Yes, it is. Thank you for inviting us tonight to talk about the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance. My name is Val Fennell. I'm the Pennsylvania Director for Gun Owners of America. I'm a native Pennsylvanian. I grew up in Allegheny County. I live here in York County now because my grandchildren are in York, so I live in Spring Garden Township. I'm a retired Air Force Colonel and also retired physician, preventive medicine and public health, also pathology. And the reason I'm here tonight is to address this. We're in a very important, hard time in our history where the threats from the federal government are very real. The Biden administration has a lot planned for our constitutional right to keep and bear arms. Part of that is one of the regulations that, executive actions that Biden ordered that came out on Friday. So the ATF issued a 115-page document to regulate homemade firearms. So since the founding of this republic, it was okay for you to make your homemade firearm. Now, because it doesn't have a serial number, they want you to take it to a dealer or someone else have it serialized. And that's just the start of it. There's calls once again for semi-automatic rifle bans, red flag gun confiscation orders, registration of firearms, universal background checks. All of this is coming from the federal government. Only thing that stands in the way of this passing is the filibuster. Your rights, and my rights, everybody's rights here are up to Joe Manchin in West Virginia and Kristin Sinema in Arizona that they hold the line. Otherwise, the Senate becomes just like the House. So the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance draws a line in the sand. It basically says, any of these acts of the federal government after, in our new version of the ordinance that we provided you tonight, after December 31st, 2020, if they regulate firearms or ammunition, the various unlawful acts in the ordinance would not be enforced or would be no cooperation. We have a similar bill in the state legislature now that Senator Doug Mastriano put in on May 3rd to make the entire state a Second Amendment sanctuary, Senate Bill 624. When we face tyranny, our lower-level elected officials have to stand in the gap between the higher elected officials and say, we are not enforcing this. We're not going to cooperate. The Nobles did this to King John on the field of running meat. They forced him to sign the Magna Carta. Our own founding fathers did this before the Crown. So that's where we stand right now. And New Freedom, this borough, very interesting. You're right on the Mason-Dixon line. And let me tell you a story. There was a woman, African-American woman by the name of Margaret Morgan, who in the late 1830s sought her freedom from traveling Maryland and came to Pennsylvania, crossed Mason-Dixon line into here into York County. She was captured by a bounty hunter by the name of Edward Prigg. Our law in Pennsylvania at the time, we had a law for the gradual abolition of slavery. Our law in Pennsylvania said if a bounty hunter came into the state to remove someone to return them back into bondage, that person was to be arrested for kidnapping, and rightly so. Well, Edward Prigg was arrested, and he was charged for kidnapping. That case went all the way to the Supreme Court of the United States as called Prigg versus Pennsylvania. And the Tannehill Court decided that our law here in Pennsylvania was unconstitutional, that the Federal Fugitive Slave Act took precedence over the right of a human being. In that decision, Justice Story wrote the opinion and said, gave us states a way out. That's where the noncommandeering principle comes from. Basically, Justice Story said the states didn't have to cooperate. So Pennsylvania turned around, and in 1847, we passed a personal liberty law. And that law in 1847 said, no cooperation with the Federal Fugitive Slave Act. The federal government would have to enforce all of its laws, and no one here would cooperate, from a constable, the jailer, all the way up to the Attorney General. No one. Not law passed. And the Second Amendment Sanctuary Ordinance that Senator Mastriano's bill does the exact same thing. Basically says we're not cooperating. So Margaret Morgan, in late 1830s, crossed that line of freedom. Will you today, New Freedom Borough, as being on the Mason-Dixon line, set up a new line of freedom for your residents and their Second Amendment rights? Thank you very much.
Again, any questions?
I had a question.
Yes, sir.
You said some states have already adopted it?
Yes, correct.
So if the state has adopted it, does everybody adopt it automatically or what?
There are, if you're talking about states, there are 11 states right now who have adopted a Second Amendment Protection Acts. And this goes, speaks to what Senator Mastriano is doing, that's Senate Bill 624. As far as local ordinances, like in this particular situation, there's like thousands, like 1,200, 1,300 counties and municipalities. It changes all the time. In Virginia, over 90% of Virginia counties and even some municipalities, over 90% of their counties adopted sanctuary resolutions to stop Governor Northam's gun control. And we, at GOA, GOA headquarters is in Springfield, Virginia, and we credit the local sheriffs and the county, they call them supervisors, they're county supervisors, for blocking the semi-automatic rifle ban because so many counties basically said, we're not enforcing your crazy gun control laws. The state actually was defeated in a Democratic Assembly with a Democratic governor, okay? And we're not partisan to GOA. We've endorsed Democrats who are pro-gun. But the fact is, in Virginia, if the way the legislative balance is, they favor gun control. So we credit those local level county officials for standing in the gap and actually stopping the ban on semi-automatic rifles because they knew that it wasn't going to get enforced. And so this leads to a peaceful, peaceful solution. Should things change in the state, and if the state follows suit, if Pennsylvania becomes the 12th state to adopt one of these, it leads to a peaceful resolution because the federal government, really, to be honest with you, does not have the resources to enforce these laws. They need to have cooperation. And if there's no cooperation, and I'm a retired Colonel, I stuck my hand up and I said, I solemnly swear to support, defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic, and domestic. And so is this about upholding our oath of office? And I say, are, because a retired officer is still the United Office, is still the officer of the United States. It's indelible. So it's a way of saying, look, we're drawing a line in the sand. We understand what the Constitution says, and we are going to stand up for the rights of the people. That's the bottom line.
So, but if we, if it's passed in Pennsylvania, and we all cover by an automatic period, we each have to individually pass?
We're all covered by.
Right, exactly. So that would be at the state level. The problem is with the state is obviously the governor's going to be to this, and then we'd have to try to override it. So it's really going to come down to counties and municipalities saying, hey, we're not going to do this. And that's, that's the problem, is the recalcitrance of the Wolf administration and their anti-gun stance. Same with our Attorney General, very bad. So that's, so that's the reason. You can't really say, hey, we just, we'll just push it off on the state, which is good. We certainly support that. This is our bill in the state legislature. We're going to get a recorded vote. That's really important. We want to know where people stand with us on this. But it's going to come down to counties. We were up in Carbon County. Carbon County is considering our ordinance. It's going to say, look, we have a police department, we've got funds, and we're going to say, look, we're not, we're not cooperating with this because this is unconstitutional.
We're not covering all our bases by having something local or something in the body.
Right, that's a good way of looking at it. Right.
I think probably, coming from Germany and having been married to a person in Special Forces and so forth, and I was a flight nurse, this, and I'm a citizen, very proud American citizen, this is probably one of the most important issues that we will ever vote on and that we will ever support in this country. We have freedom of speech, and we have the right to bear arms.
Yes, ma'am.
And I think it is so important, but it's also important, extremely important, to educate, to education in the school system. That is the most important because you get it through education, education, education. And then when you follow up, you must also follow up with history. And history repeats itself.
Yep.
With Hitler, you know? You take the speech away, you take your radio away, and you take your guns away, and what do you have? And right now, we have a lot of problems in this country. We're not supporting our police like we should. We don't, we support, you know, the Second of Rights. I think so that's important, and I'm so happy that you appeared before us, and I thank you.
You're welcome.
I think what we'll do at this point then is we'll turn the ordinance over to the solicitor and allow him to review it, and we'll discuss it at our next meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
We're happy to support you and answer any questions.
Yeah, we will follow through with this the whole way. We'll answer it.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes for the last council meeting. Is there any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye. You're certainly welcome to stay, but we won't be offended if you want to duck out. Sure choice.
We're here.
We can also answer questions afterwards.
Any questions on the treasurer's report?
I'm going to be accepted. Treasurer's report is, we have the report.
I have a motion to accept the treasurer's report.
Okay.
And the second from Ryan. Is there any further discussion? Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye. Okay, I just kind of wanted to bring everybody up to date a little bit on what's been going on. We've had a long to-do list since COVID started, and we're actually getting some of those things done. We weren't able to get bids to set up livestream, and at the urging and with the support of our mayor, we've gotten two bids to do livestream in chambers, and we're going to be implementing that soon. In fact, we can discuss the two bids that we received tonight. We're also working with REC Council on a concert series in Marge Goodfellow Park, and we are actually going to, we just passed out a DCNR resolution. This resolution will oblige us for only $500 for a study, and once the study is complete, we have teamed with Shrewsbury Township, because that's required in the DCNR grant. And this will give us a REC director for four years. It'll be paid 100% the first year, 75% the second year, 50% the third year, and 25% the fourth year. So this will give us a, someone who's going to work with REC to develop programs for REC Council. We're also revamping the website in this month? Maybe? This month or next month, we'll have a new website, but we've already seen the Savvy Citizen come up. The Savvy Citizen is up and working. It addresses a lot of the issues that have come up over the last year as far as notifying our citizens of what's happening in the borough, when a street is being closed, when there might be a water main break or a power outage. So that'll be push notifications. If you, you can go online right now and sign up. It's in the App Store. You sign up for the Savvy Citizen, you select New Freedom Borough, and it'll give you a push notification. Also gives you weather updates and things like that. It's kind of neat, but it'll tell you when the streets are, it'll also tell you that the concert is coming up on August 8th. So it'll give you a whole calendar of borough activities. We've also started the transition to our, all of our finances to QuickBooks. That'll be a lot better for account tracking and tracking funds. So that'll be done, that's actually in process. It's almost completed now, I think. So everything will be in QuickBooks, and we'll be able to pull reports and see how we're spending our money, and it'll be good for the citizens for transparency and tracking funds. So I just wanted to bring you up to date on what we were doing because I, I don't think we've ever actually condensed it all in state of the borough report on the thing, but that's where we are. Does anyone have any questions on anything?
Can I have a question about our development over there? Could you put through, hold the comment real quick?
Oh, on the, the house?
No, not the house. That's a speed limit signs. We did the speed limit study. We're going to put signs up because we got them lined up and then, and we're rude all the time. That way we can ticket them, because with that full size, you can't take it home.
Oh, there are, there are no signs currently?
No, sir.
You're talking about Logan?
No, I'm talking about Color Point. No speed limit signs in the development at all. They have speed limit signs up there in Shrewsbury, that new development. They have, they put them up right away. We did our speed study. We have no speed limit signs in our development.
Those, we should be able to get those somehow, right? When the study's done.
Is that also Keystone?
Have we taken the roads as well?
Are the streets public, number one?
Yeah, they are.
So they're public. In order to have an effective and enforceable speed limit, A, you need to do a speed study that's typically done either by a representative from Pendaup, the county, or the police department, and you need to then adopt an ordinance officially establishing the speed limit, and then after that, you have to properly put the signage up.
Yeah, and we definitely can do that, yeah. That's not, that should be, that should be an easy fix. I mean.
Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but in a borough.
Did you, I'm sorry, did you, did you say that there was a study done?
There is, yes, there was a speed limit study done.
And who did the study?
Police Department. The police department and Arena. No, I'm sorry, the secretary we had here before.
Tanya.
Tanya.
Okay, all right.
See, that's all done, and it's been a while, and I know Cooper came in and everything slowed down, but.
Well, the study is done. I mean, that's the first step, so if that's done and we can verify that, then we can just do an ordinance and have your speed limit signs in, you know, you know, shortly, so.
I appreciate it.
I guess I'm not sure why that wasn't part of the development initially, but we can pull those records, we'll pull the traffic study, the speed study, take a look at that. I mean, my assumption is going to be 25 miles an hour in a residential development.
Right.
And then we'll take a look at that, and then a solicitor and I will discuss the ordinance and get it on the agenda for June, if that's the case, as long as.
As long as the study's done, we'll get the ordinance passed in June, and as soon as we pass it, within a couple of weeks, as long as we have the signs in stock, we might have to order something, but we can do that in tandem. We'll just order the signs prior to the ordinance, so.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Donnie, how long was it, did you, is this the first year you guys plowed up there? I think there, it had to do with Keystone Homes and the bond issue because we still didn't, I don't think, release all the bond because we were waiting for some type of additional developments up there to occur, and I know the borough wasn't taking over the maintenance of the streets for a reason, and I know it hasn't been all that long since we've taken control of the streets.
We went to the.
Was it stormwater? Okay, Keystone had to do stormwater, and that's all completed now, but it hasn't been that long.
I don't know with COVID and stuff, I don't know where all that stands, really. But Keystone.
Yeah, Keystone, the problem was with Keystone.
But we're plowing the streets.
Yes.
So there are streets now, so.
Yeah, this is the way we could have it. We've found in, found in the neighborhood.
Okay, so, yeah. Anything else, any other questions or comments? Okay, the last thing I have then is we do have the, the resolution to go ahead and participate in the study for $500, and I would entertain a motion to go ahead and do that so we can get that underway.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and adopt this resolution.
I want to, my understanding is that because we're in the loop with Shrewsbury.
Well, that's a terrible word, but.
Because we're, because we're in partnership with Shrewsbury.
Partnership, much better.
The recreation director, the recreation director of both of us.
That is correct, yes. And I, I think that's actually a good thing.
I do too, yeah.
Because we, you know, we can partner a lot of activities. You know, right now, we have ultimate frisbee in Northern Park, you know, and that could be a joint, you know, thing with New Freedom so that everybody knows about that. It could be put on Savvy Citizen, and people, you know, things can grow that way, so.
I agree.
So I think it's really cool if we do that.
We can leverage each other.
Yes.
Exactly.
And just to clarify, the application has already been submitted to DCNR. This is just the resolution to identify the manager as the applicant and having the ability to sign that application and then sign a contract should the word come through, which most likely it will.
It actually gives Andrew the right to sign the study. I have a first and a second. All in favor? Oh, I'm sorry, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose. My vote is aye. Do I sign this?
We've got a lot to do, so I'm going to keep this short tonight. First of all, thank you, Andrew, for bringing that Savvy Citizen. I think we have, what, over 100 residents now that have signed up for it. Please, we do record these, so if you see this, please sign up for that. You can either get it directly to your phone, to your email. It is very beneficial. It is on the spot. I mean, we can, we can instantaneously put this information out to all citizens. And if I'm correct, I think if you sign. out to all citizens. And if I'm correct, I think if you sign up for it, you can still get an email on a PC rather than a phone. So just be, if you don't have, you know, a new phone, you can, you can always go on your PC and download it. I'm very impressed. I've put it on Facebook and I haven't gotten anything except for positive, positive comments on, on this. And thank yous to council and the borough for, for adopting this.
You may, you may want to mention too, that you don't have to be a resident.
No, no, you don't have, you don't have to be a resident. And I don't think, I think the nearest other Savvy borough is what, Jacobus?
Yeah, I think it's Jacobus.
Jacobus. Now, Shrewsbury, Shrewsbury Township, I don't think have this, but, you know, I mean, we had the weather come, bad weather. I mean, jeez, Christmas, we had hail and everything else. We get from Penn State Weather, you know, I guess that automatically goes. Am I correct, Andrew?
Yeah, the, the user can select which notifications they would like to receive. So if you don't want to receive all those notifications, you can turn them off. By default, they're all on.
Turn the weather ones off after you go to bed. Let me tell you, I was awake all night long, but one night I couldn't figure out why I couldn't get these weather alerts because it would come out about once an hour. But no, it's, it's a wonderful system. Please take advantage of it. Other than that, I'm gonna, if I can, go to our police report with Donna Benton and I may have a few things to add to that.
Okay, they did receive bids on those three vehicles that were passed their service. So the three bids totaled $7,450. That money is going to be used to help equip the new Tahoe that we received recently. And they're working on the title transfers for those vehicles right now. On April 23rd, they had another attempted arson at a residence. The suspect was in the rear of the residence with an accelerant. The homeowner was home. So the chief did thank New Freedom. That has offered up some money for the reward, but that arsonist is still out there. And did you want to say anything else on that?
No, that's, that was out in North Constitution about the middle of the block. The person, there's a deck right off of the ground and they spread an accelerant on the deck and set it on fire, which is similar to what they did with the other arsons. At this point, I think we're up to seven vehicle fires in three homes. So we've got somebody out there that's, fortunately, the gentleman was home. It was about 10:30 at night. My pager went off and he went out, smelled smoke, went out, grabbed his garden hose. Till the fire company and police got there, it was already out. So thank goodness, had they not been home, we could have lost another house. The one up on Charles Street, they had an addition. They basically had to strip that whole addition off the house and rebuild it.
Is this, is this just New Freedom there or how many municipalities are involved in this?
Right now, with the arson, it's based, it's really been just New Freedom. We did have a couple of forest fires also, but they can't really say whether they were arson, they were right outside of town. One was kind of Maryland-ish, but we all know how close that is. But it was kind of odd that we would just have a, an arbitrary forest fire. I, I think we've got a, a real problem here until they catch this gentleman. Yeah, it is a man.
I use a term you literally...
I, I would ask all of you, especially in New Freedom, but anywhere, if you have Ring cameras, if you have other cameras on your homes that are motion detection, please register them with the police department because they, if they have an incident, they know you've got cameras. They can come to your house, look and see if you've got video of an occurrence. Right after the one above, above me off of Constitution up on Charles. The police were here. They brought in state police. We must have had 12 officers. And they went door to door, asking people if they had Ring cameras and asking if they could take a look at their, their video. Unfortunately, nobody, nobody caught it. But there is a method on their website that you can register your cameras, your Ring, so that they are aware if there's an incident by your house. Maybe somebody walked, you know, this, these, most of these are happening at 2:00 in the morning. Somebody walks in front of your house and sets the house on fire across the street. They can pick that up. They have a couple of pictures from Ring cameras. Unfortunately, it was night and they were a little, little foggy. If any of you are thinking about getting a Ring camera or any type of surveillance, make sure you do a 1080. Go with a high resolution because otherwise at night, you really get a little, a little foggy. But that's, that's very important. Our, our police officers were really on the ball with that, with all of those. And we thank them and our fire department for us not losing more. Our residents did not lose any more than they, than they did.
I have a question about this. Southern Regional has really not put out a whole lot of information about the arsons.
It's been on their website and their crime watch.
Not, not to the number of, to of seven? So I'm wondering if there, is that a calculated thing?
No, that's, those are ones that they've responded to. And unfortunately, sometimes when things are still under investigation, the information isn't released to the public because there are certain things they don't want them to know. You know, it kind of keeps it...
Some, some, some of them have come out right away. I understand not releasing a lot of information. I certainly understand that. But a lot of these seemingly have not been announced. I'm wondering...
I've announced, I think, almost all of them.
No, I'm not saying you. I'm saying Southern Regional Police. That includes the fire department.
They just changed their website. They changed over to this crime watch. Now, this has been ongoing for probably six, eight months. This isn't something that just happened last month.
Yeah.
It's actually over a year, right?
Well, yeah, it's probably over a year. So they didn't have that crime watch before. Since they've got crime watch, every time it does happen, they, they have put it on. But...
One thing you might have noticed, the, one thing you might have noticed is the, the $1,000 reward on the website for the, for the police. And the mayor and I got together and we kind of approved it as an emergency and we need to ratify that $1,000 reward, which is, since all of the instances have come out of New Freedom, New Freedom is going to put up the money for the $1,000 reward. So I need somebody to either give me a pen so I can write a check or ratify the...
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and, you know, support that one.
Seconding. Any discussion on that?
Is this, this is for information reading too, or is this...
No, it has to lead to the arrest and conviction. It's not just like, I can't turn you in and get $1,000. If that's what you were thinking.
He ain't worth it. You think I'm worth a go?
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? My vote is aye.
On behalf of Jim Bonnington and the police department, I thank you. There is usually an organization, I forget what it's called.
Crime Stoppers.
Crime Stoppers, that usually comes up with reward money. Unfortunately, they're broke. So, thank you, President of Council. And I went to him after hearing from, from Chief Bonnington that they would like to do this. They think that it might help because they think it's somebody young. And usually, you know, they, they like to tell other people. And for $1,000, you'd be surprised what people will, they'll turn in their buddies for $1,000.
I don't, people will take down half a city block.
For $1,000. So yes, from council, thank you for that. It's very important. I think you had...
Just a couple more things. Chairman Trout informed the commission that Officer Carey has resigned from Southern Regional Police Department. He will be on the books till the end of May using vacation. And the commission approved to begin the replacement process for him. Applications are being accepted right now for a police officer. The chief acknowledged that there has been a tremendous outpouring of support for Sergeant Teague and he was appreciative of that. And then the only other thing is June and July's meetings will also be held in Shrewsbury.
Hi. And since you brought that up, I, I would like to mention that the VFW, the fundraiser for the, the VFW conducted for Sergeant Teague, we came up with over $8,000 for Dan. So I know he has good insurance and, you know, but his wife basically has stopped working in order to take care of him. So they've lost an income from their family. So it's been a great community effort. Gilice has had, and some other businesses have had fundraisers too. So, you know, it's, it's nice that we can come together as a family to, to support somebody. So thanks to everybody in the community.
So we're going to have to realize that we're probably going to have some overtime when it comes to police in the next several months. Officer Teague is obviously not working and will be off for quite some time, using Officer Carey. Now, we're down to two officers, which means chief and the other officers have to fill in those spots. So we're going to have to be prepared for some overtime. We leave it up to chief to kind of designate those schedules and hopefully it, it won't get too bad. I did give everybody, I think in your packet, you have a, a report for March and April. I'm, I'm going to include that in the packets for council every month from now on, so you can actually see what's going on specifically in New Freedom. But it covers all of SRPD's territory, Stewartstown, Railroad, Shrewsbury, and New Freedom. So you can actually see the, the details and accounts of what's, what's been happening. I think that's important. And also shows you where we are when it comes in terms of our, our time allotment for the month and for the year. So I will continue to supply that, that to council.
Anything else? Brings us to the manager's report.
Good evening. Everybody has a copy of the manager's report in the packet. In addition to that, I do have two items up for discussion tonight. The first one is we were able to receive two proposals for the audio video upgrades to the council chambers here as requested. The first proposal was from Business Information Group, and that's for Microsoft Teams meeting setup for the room. That proposal is less than the proposal from SSP Custom Sound LLC for a similar installation, labor, and equipment. So both use a, a similar layout for the improvements to this room, but there are a little different in the software packages as well as the installation. So if there's questions, I can try to address those at this point.
Andrew, we won't, we won't do the still recording anymore. It'll be live.
That's correct. You could choose to record through the, whether it's Microsoft Teams or Zoom, you could choose to record that way for playback and, and if someone went to go back and watch. That's, that's fine.
I can't find the second.
Yeah, both, both can use the existing microphone system. I know the one specifically called it out, but I didn't, I don't think I saw it specifically in the other one.
I think they're going to add a couple of microphones, but they're using the, the ones that we have now as well. So there's, there's no loss there.
I want to make sure we weren't kind of double dipping on something like that.
Right. I know when we originally talked about this, I don't think any of us were considering this kind of an outplay just to be able to have Zoom meetings when, you know, we're, we're rounding the corner here on COVID. Hey, this occurred, I know Shrewsbury put it in and it cost about a tenth of what we're looking at here. That's a lot of taxpayer dollars, in my opinion, for whatever that's worth, you know?
Well, I agree. I think it's just the wrong time to spend a large amount of money because we really don't know what's coming down the road here. How much was it over, that they spent on the Zoom over in Shrewsbury?
Maybe it took, they already had, well, they, they went ahead and bought new microphones. They had microphones. They bought new microphones. They didn't have to buy a projector. It was just sound equipment to tie everything together, laptop. And I think it might have been around $2,500 total.
Is, is this borough or Shrewsbury Township, Mayor?
Borough.
Borough, okay.
Now, the township has it too, and I haven't had a chance to talk to Todd to see what their upgrade cost. But I know it wasn't anywhere near this.
Well, but the problem with their upgrade is it's just temporary because they're looking at a new building. So the upgrades that they were able to install were temporary. They're looking at a new building and they used COVID money from the county.
The, the other side that you have to that too, though, and I think we could probably use COVID money for this, right?
Possibly in the next round.
Or is it over?
No, it's not over.
No, I mean, money.
It's not over. But the, the other side to that is that, I think you had, didn't Neil, or Nate, I'm sorry, didn't Nate do all their stuff?
Nate, yeah.
Yeah, Nate did, Nate did most of it. And he said, I'll, I'll never, I won't do another one because of time.
Well, that, but see, that's, that's the problem. I mean, this includes somebody to come in, set it all up, get it all working. This actually...
For that, for that, they should take us all out to dinner and...
Did, did we only get one, did we only get one appraisal?
Two, there's two bids, isn't there?
Two. Seems like a lot of money, but I guess...
Oh, and really, you're looking at comparing, it sounds like, what Shrewsbury Borough did. There's a little bit of apples and oranges here to the different installations and different level of, of software and what it can provide to the residents. So again, it's completely up to council. I was kind of asked to put something together to have the ability to...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
We're going to have to decide, we're going to have to decide on it now.
Well, I guess my observation, is this coasters? It, it is coasters qualified. I think it did say it in the quote. I was looking for it. Okay.
It is, yeah.
Which means we don't have to go out on a bid for it.
Correct, the justification.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Alright.
So that's an advantage too. So we don't have, no, we don't have to decide on it tonight. I mean, how long is the quote good for? I didn't look.
Usually they're good for 30 days. I don't recall seeing that, though.
I mean, they, uh, correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but they already have the screen, right? Cam?
Yes, and it's, it's lousy. It's, it's one of the projection types on a screen like we have over there on the floor.
I mean, you know, I think...
When I looked into it, it was like $1,500 for, and I was just looking at two, two 70-inch TVs. And we, we have the camera that we could use and a, and a laptop. And I think it was, we were looking at around 1,500. But, I mean, this is a professional installation. Who are we going to have to install it? Because we did the sound system. I'm not doing...
Well, the other side too is, I mean, you know, we have, right now, what we're doing is we're recording it. Then we take the recording and Dave does his magic and edits, edits it a little bit, edits it a little, anyway, you know what I mean. And then we, you know, we put it on, online at that point. You know, this would be a direct link to, you know, so that it would be basically live stream. I think it meets, you know, when we took office, we said we were going to be more transparent. I don't think this is entirely just a COVID thing. And you don't know that COVID's gone away. They're talking about something in the winter. So I think this plans for the future and a... So I think this plans for the future and allows people who can't make it in. I mean, if you're seedy to sit at home and watch the meeting, and you could actually still participate if you want to, right? On Microsoft meeting.
I will say.
It just gives a wide variety of.
I haven't seen a lot of participation in Shrewsbury from, or Glen Rock, from their residents. Most of it has been council members that really haven't gotten vaccinated yet and a few other people that come in and give reports. You know, like Donna, you know, could give her report through Zoom. But I haven't seen an overabundance of residents. But I think it would give them at least the opportunity, if we could come up with something that is Zoom or GoV or one of those.
Well, it would also give us an opportunity. Like, I know Rec doesn't like coming and sitting through an entire meeting, but they could come and participate during a section and then log off. So I think it would just give us a lot more flexibility. You could even, you know, if I'm out of town and I wanted to come in, I could come into the meeting and still be here and be present to vote because that's allowed. So do we have to make a decision tonight? Absolutely not. But I am in favor of a personal idea.
Hey, Andy? Yeah, I was just looking at this, you know, because you said there was two, you said there was two of them. And I just looked at this, and it has a disclaimer on. So if they spend all this money and we're using the old stuff that we have, then there's no guarantee we have to pay them. We might have to buy new equipment because.
Well, that's the higher bid, though. I wouldn't recommend that anywhere.
Yeah, I looked at that, and I thought that's, it looks good on price-wise.
There's no disclaimer on the one that we're, Erica?
Hey, you're talking about live feeds, so you can watch it at that time. Is there also going to be a link to that? So if you're busy then, the following week, you can come to it and look at it then?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it'll still be recorded. And in fact, you could just do it if you wanted to, just like you do Raisin Anatomy. You know, you just record it and, you know, go watch it.
Glen Rock does that.
I like Raisin Anatomy, who's fine.
Glen Rock does that, but if you don't watch it right then, they don't post it anywhere. So you can't see it.
Yeah, they don't record. They don't keep a recording.
Or you could just, I mean, we would not make it so you were not allowed to record it. You could record it if you want to. We would not, as a borough, record it and keep a copy because then that falls under freedom of information, and we just don't need to do that.
But there's nothing to say that we can't continue to do what we're doing now and just put it out later on YouTube so that people can view it. They're just not going to be live streaming and being able to call in if they have.
Well, yeah, we could continue to do what we're doing now. But, you know, again, it just makes it, it basically takes us and brings our technology up to date. Where, because we don't know how long, you know, there's going to be other things that happen that make it difficult for people to get here if there's. You know, so I just think it's a good thing.
It would be nice in my absence of almost three months. I couldn't attend any of these, but I'd rather attend all the other ones, but not this one.
Exactly. And you would be able to do that, and you'd be able to talk and participate. And, yeah, I think it's a really good thing.
Andrew, do you think there's any negotiating room here? Like, the one I think is an 82-inch TV. Do we need an 82-inch TV?
No. No, however, I don't think, when you look at the price of TVs, I mean, you're talking.
There's a big difference between 82-inch TV and 70-inch.
Well, but that's, yeah, the 70-inch was prepared in the first proposal. So it's already cheaper.
Yeah, the 70-inch right now, you can pick one of those up for like less than $500.
Yeah, I mean, you have to keep in mind, too, the equipment's only $7,700. The $1,500 of it is labor. So.
The other one says we're going to add two microphones for a total of 12. We only have eight, right? We have eight, so two more would be 10, not 12.
I guess, which one are you looking at first?
I'm sorry, SSP? Two additional desk microphones for a total of 12 microphones?
That's the higher bids. I mean, I would eliminate them between what Vernell pointed out with the, it's them taking exception, and the microphones. I mean, it's, I would go with the other one just because it's less money and they seem to be doing more of those. Anything else? We could either, I could either ask for a motion, or we could table it and discuss it. Again, the quote's good for 30 days.
I would say let's table it and discuss it in 30 days. It would be a good thing to do if everybody would be in agreement to digest it. But it's just me.
It'll expire before the next meeting.
I'm sorry?
It'll expire before the next meeting.
Yeah, I would guess.
Before the next meeting.
Is that going to be a motion?
I, my only, I wonder, do we need two TVs? I mean, that's, you know, that'd be almost $1,000 savings between the TV and the mount.
I'm not sure. Why can't we just put one TV right there?
I was actually, like, right over here on the wall.
Yeah, and if someone's speaking, we can always turn and look at them, right?
I mean, I'm definitely all in favor. I'm just trying to process everything as far as.
I don't think, I mean, even the cost of one TV, though, it's not really very good.
No, it's not astronomical by any, by any means. I'm just wondering, do you really need two of them?
Yeah, and that was kind of my fault as working through the proposals, was to actually put them back to back, possibly on that wall over there, so that the council could fully view one and the public could fully view the other one. So they were kind of on an angle back to back. But there are other options, whether you put on that wall or the wall behind us. It's just a matter of ease of viewing at that point.
The one thing that you could do if you wanted would be to approve and not to exceed. And then Andrew can go and negotiate or discuss with them and to try to get the price down. At least put a thing forward.
That's good. That's good.
I'll make a motion that, that's the company name, Business Information Group, that we pursue that, but not to exceed the $22,838.58. And then obviously have the leniency or the blue wave of changing or modifying that as long as we don't exceed that.
One second.
Okay. The first and the second, certainly.
What happened to Inga's table?
We didn't get a second on the table, so I just, that's why I asked.
Okay, I didn't think she was finished.
Oh.
It's fine.
Okay.
Hey, Andy, if we vote to table, I was going to say that means that would run out.
Well, it will run out, yes. We would have to call them and ask them to extend it.
I don't see anything in here that says 30 days.
I didn't see anything either. That would just be the default, but.
Yeah, so it's.
Yeah, I mean, it's perfectly okay to table.
And I'm sure if you go back to the big and say, hey, it looks good, but we have a few questions. They're not going to say, oh, no, sorry, 30 days running out. Forget it.
They want your business.
Yeah.
Okay, I'll second the thing, because.
I mean, that's why I said table it and let's, you know, think about it within the 30 days, if that's a possibility. I don't know how to set the apple car in there, but it's just my feeling.
I think it may be helpful in those 30 days, all the questions that you have, whatever. Get those to Andy, he'll come back with answers, and then hopefully there'll be no questions for the next meeting.
I agree with you, that's all.
So I have a motion and a second to table it until the next meeting. Can we add to that that questions need to be in the ending within the next five days if I end the week, close business Friday? Any questions, anyone has?
I was just going to say I could.
I'm sorry?
I would draw my second.
Yeah.
I would draw my motion for moving forward with this for now.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to table until next meeting. All in favor?
Aye.
Yes? My vote also is aye. Thank you for the work and the pleasure, too.
Sure, no problem. So going along the same lines of getting proposals, you have in your packet two proposals for improvements to the public works facility. This is for interior and exterior renovations. Exterior renovations really relate to the roof and drainage system. The roof is in need of replacement, and there are some modifications needed with the substructure of the roof in the older section. So we received two proposals for engineering, architectural and engineering services to begin that project from Bootcart Horn and Warehouse. And you have the scope of services there. And just as a reminder, part of the borrowing and refinance that was just completed was to fund this improvement to the building or this renovation. So we've kind of already taken some steps. This is the next step in the process to look at those professional services and make a decision and move forward.
Now, I talked to Andrew today. And most, I guess, nobody on council that's here now was here when we went through this business with the cook shack. But Borough paid, and we had complete design and specification and bid documents early and prepared for the cook shack. It was bid, and what came in, it was sticker shot amongst the council. Now, I'm not saying that we have a limit or that we wouldn't do it, but it would be nice to know if whoever we select to do this, provide the architectural engineering services, can provide an estimate based on, you know, that we're going to stay within the existing building footprint. We're not anything out. And Andrew made a copy of the Bootcart Horn did in the way of an upgrade proposal back in 2014. It included a wash bay, it included an extension on the building. Here, we're working with a footprint, within the footprint of the building. But there's going to be some significant renovations, especially with the roof. It'd be nice to know if they can do it in a reasonable amount, if council wants to do that, if that's council's decision to spend, you know, a couple thousand, a couple thousand dollars. If you look at Warehouse under compensation, schematic design phase services, they have $12,620. But I don't think they have to spend that much to give us an idea. It's going to cost you, you know, $80, $85 a square foot to do this renovation, or $125 a square foot. At least we'll have an idea where we're coming from, what it's going to cost. Bootcart Horn's price, and I don't have her in front of me, Andrew looked at it today with me. It was about, what, $900, some thousand bucks? But that was, that was a couple additions on the building, and that was at, what, $184 a square foot? Or $118 a square foot? I mean, they had a couple of seventy out. But anyway, just something like that. If the council wants to do that before proceeding, or if you just wanted, go ahead, okay, fine. But it would be nice to know because, like I said, we had the situation with the cook shack, got a price, got all these construction documents done, and it was bid, and it was like, council, jaws dropped when the price came in, so.
I think I would be in favor of proposing that we get the engineering estimates, but I think we need to move forward on the roof. I mean, the roof isn't, can't go through another winter.
Oh, that's, yeah, that's, that's for sure. I just don't know if some of this is predicated on getting the roof done or if the roof is a separate item. But, yeah, absolutely, because that brings me to attention for years.
So I guess that would be my suggestion is we go, we do what Dennis said and let them go ahead and come up with an estimate with the caveat that the roof has to be done soon. And I think we go ahead and proceed with the estimate and the bidding on the roof.
Yeah.
Is that possible?
I believe so. I, my only suggestion would be then, if you're looking at the two proposals, so for Warehouse, you would authorize the Section 1.0, which is Schematic Design Phase Service. And in that service, they do have a, all right, let me get back here. They do have a budget estimate, and they will coordinate with their design team. They'll kind of develop a magnitude, project magnitude, get a phase of service, and then develop a budget for review before moving into that construction phase. So basically, before bidding, before looking at anything, they come back with an opinion of probable cost on those improvements.
Is there a timeline on any of that? I didn't see.
I believe there is. And I believe what we looked at there is it would be about three to four months of architectural engineering and a four-month construction window.
That puts us, if we start now, that gets us before winter, basically. So I think, so I guess that's, I guess, if we can get them to do the engineering and then come back with the estimate and approve it.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to see the whole of work, especially with respect to the roof. I mean, because you're right, we don't want to go through another weird with the roof. So if they can, they can sort of like parallel, they can start work on the roof, and also work on their estimate, factor some of that. And because we're talking, I mean, the month, the month, so we're talking about a month. So, you know, I don't want to lose a month progress, because it is not a year.
Can we split those jobs like Dennis said? Could we split those and do, get a bid for the roof separately from?
Exactly. That was my suggestion.
That would be good. That would be very good. I like that.
I think you can. I think the only difference is you're looking at coordinating then with those interior renovations that are needed.
What Dennis said, if we get, if it's cost prohibitive, and we say it ends up like the cook shack, and we said, we can't do that, really, it's just too much.
Well, but at that point, you already borrowed money to do this, so.
We actually have to spend the money we borrowed on that project because that's what we borrowed it for.
You told me about the eight million?
Yeah, partly.
Oh, okay, okay. I thought we could spend it on whatever we want.
Well, so, just so we're clear, you know, Dennis, you made a good suggestion of, hey, let's get an estimate as to how much the projects cost. But if you're going to go ahead with the Warehouse proposal and you're going to approve Section 1.0 Schematic Design Phase Services, that's a heck of a lot more than just coming up with an estimate of cost.
Yeah.
And furthermore, as defined in the contract, the proposed construction includes not only the replacement and reconfiguration of the existing metal roof, but interior toilet facility, office, and break room areas, HVAC, and electrical improvements. So if you approve 1.0 for the $12,000 and change, you're approving the schematic design of all that stuff, just not the roof. But at the end of the day, you're going to have a schematic design for all that stuff. And as you suggested, can you give us an estimate of cost as well?
And I think that's okay because we can't go any further until we get that done. So I think that's all right to do.
Yeah, I just want to make sure, based on the discussion, everyone understands what they're approving. And when you get it back, it's going to be a lot more than just the roof.
Right, exactly, yes, that's true.
When we used to be working, I said this to Andrew today. I mean, the client would ask, okay, you know, we need a water line project, and we need a sewer line project. What's it going to cost? And we would do an estimate, or what's the treatment plan, what are you going to cost? You know, $70 a gallon, don't create a treatment plan. You know, and sometimes you're way off, but at least you get an idea of the magnitude. And usually, people experience and say, yeah, okay, yeah, it's going to be in the ballpark or give a range or something like that. Especially now, I mean, you know, everybody seems to be getting busier now. Who knows what it'll be like when you're ready to bid? But, you know, at least you got something to start with.
Well, the way, yeah, and that is, that's kind of the way we have to do business anyway. We have to get the engineering front end done so we can see what it costs, so we can approve the actual work. So I think it's fair to do that.
Yeah, I'm really not interested if it's, and maybe we need to have a caveat. If Andrew talks to people, they say, well, you know, we can't get going with this. It's going to hold up the roof, and I don't want to hold up the roof. I mean, so maybe we need a caveat that says if there's some hiccup here because it's going to slow the progress on getting the roof designed because it's not just a reroute, it's a modification to the roof. a reroute, it's a modification to the roof. If that's going to happen, then let's, let's not do that. Let's not hold up progress for the sake of trying to get an estimate. But someplace, somewhere along the line, if they can do that, parallel the two, root to an estimate and just give us an estimate so that if worse comes to worse, we can say, okay, what else can we do instead of get right down to the end and find out, well, I don't want to surprise.
Can I ask you to put that in the form of a motion?
Yeah.
I'll hear this.
I'll say that.
I'm not sure if we're. Can we just get a motion out of that?
Yeah.
And then can you restate it? Because we're not just a second to it.
Okay. And we would also just add solicitor review.
Yes.
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 Okay. So I have a motion to authorize 1.0, which is going to include the engineering work for the entire scope of effort with the caveat that the roof takes priority and that we need that as soon as possible. And we would get, make a decision after the estimates come in.
Yes.
And this is Warehouse?
Yes. Lois is better.
I don't want to complicate the motion, but let's say that, you know, okay, we get something through the roof and the roof can get done and we find out that the rest of it is way, way, way overworked budget, but we're going to have a dry building at least and maybe in the future then we can go back and we can revisit the footprint.
That's okay.
Yes.
But let's not hold the roof up.
Yeah. Well, yeah, we're not approving anything other than the roof and Section 1.0 and hopefully we'll get a bid back on the roof that will be acceptable and we will approve that at that time.
And it's conceivable, Andrew, that when you go to Warehouse, they're going to say, well, you know, part of our design service and work for the, working within the footprint of the building included working on the roof. Now, we have to separate the two, but that price may not, may not be the same.
That's possible, yeah.
Separate the two. That's, I'm not putting words in there, but I'm just saying it's a possibility to separate them.
There's economies of scale to be doing the whole thing at one time, you know?
Yeah, and I mean, I think no matter what the decision is on the interior improvements, this was already looked at back in 2014, there are improvements that the staff need over there to function. So at some point, you're going to have to look at those improvements. I don't want to say regardless of dollar value, but it's going to have to be a consideration for the, you know, your housing employees over there, they're staying there through snowstorms and hazards and things. They need a functioning bathroom at least, so, a minimum. So I think there are modifications that are needed over there in addition to that roof replacement.
But those are going to be bid, right? So we should be, and it'll come back to us and we'll, you know, I think it's good.
And I want to put them on the spot. Or is this okay, Danny, or I mean?
Yeah, we're not asking for the whole, we're just asking for, you know, another bathroom.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
You know, and as far as like the two, going back to 2014, you talked about the wash bay and all that, we don't need all that. That was someone else's dream.
Right.
You know, we were asking for basic stuff.
Basic.
You know, you know, to help out, you know, during the winter time, that's all.
No, I understand.
Yeah.
All right.
So we were actually, when you were talking about the break room, the 2014, that was talking about building an addition for that. We were talking about building an addition for the wash bay. I don't want that.
I remember it was our.
We don't need that. Yeah. We can use stuff interior inside that building that what we need is, that's all we need.
Now, we did approve five thousand dollars for them to.
And they have done that?
Okay, that has been done. I haven't been over there for a while, so.
No, no, we didn't do, we didn't do anything because by code, we couldn't do that.
Oh, you didn't put the carpet in or the bunker?
Not, not yet because we had to, we had to wait for, everything has to be done by code. So we can't.
But who said that?
Don't we have the food enforcement officer?
Still has to comply.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, any, go ahead.
Yeah, I keep saying I don't want to complicate this and every time I say something, it seems like they're complicating it. But if Andrew talks to me and they say, you know, this really does complicate stuff and we're going to have to wait for a month and, is there any way, Steve, that Andrew can send something to us and say, you know what, this isn't fly, this can't fly the way we'd like it to with what we're saying? Is there a way to speed the process up or?
We could call a special meeting, right?
You can call a special meeting. You could potentially say, okay, we're going to approve a not to exceed schematic design phase service for roofing, not to exceed five thousand dollars. And therefore they could start them at if that's, if that's what occurs.
I just.
I think we should approve 1.0 and let them.
Well, sure, but I just don't want to see, I don't want anything slowed down from the roof and, and I know what Danny's saying for the rest of the, but I went over here, you need to go take a look at it and see that, you know, something's got to get done with the inside. I'm just, now I'm wondering about my own motion. You could just, just do it by the book, we borrowed the money and just say, okay, you know, we're, we're at risk, I'm thinking as I'm talking, we're at risk of something not getting done before the winter time, especially the roof and the inside has to get done. We just bite the bullet and say, okay, we're going to, we're going to pay for it. And if it's, we get sticker shock at the end, I guess we go back to the architect and say, okay, if there's something else we can do here, if they're lying to us, something else we can do, get too much else with the roof, but the interior.
Why don't, we could, we could approve it with the caveat that they're going to bring it back to us before proceeding, right? I mean, that would be.
Absolutely. You will have.
I mean, that, that would be the thing to do, I would think.
Council will have to authorize advertisement of this project for bid.
Yeah, so I think it's okay to do that. Do you want to modify your motion to include the inside? You know?
The basic inside?
I think so, because I'm just afraid that we're going to get to a situation where the architect's going to look at it and say, you know what, these guys aren't architects. They're saying do this and do that, but you know, all these pieces of the puzzle have to fit together and this is the way we do our work and this is what we set up with cost and now we're not doing it, they have something to do, doing something different. So yeah, I'd like to modify the motion and just, we'll go ahead and do it and maybe if they can, if it's possible with their 1.0 schematic design phase services, they can say, okay, yeah, we're going to, you know, we'll throw out an estimate here. It's a range, it's a ballpark, don't hold us to it because I know what that's like. Don't hold us to it, but you know, here's what we think a reasonable cost might be.
I think, I think that's a good thing to do and I think they can come back and we're going to approve it anyway or not. I mean, we're going to have to discuss it, so. And you're going to, and they're not going to do this in a vacuum. So I mean, you could tell them our key concern is the roof and we want to get that done before winter. So if they know that, when they start to design, they should be able to put a priority on that.
Yeah, I wouldn't be saying this hadn't, this hadn't happened with the cook shack, can we? Everything, everything done, Borough spent a lot of money on all these specs and bid documents, everything else. And then when the bid came in, you know, everybody just hit the table up here, you know?
Well, the roof and the bathroom.
And I'll, I'll forward warranty right now with COVID, not only the materials, material prices are expensive.
See, that's in my mind, too. You just, there's other things that could slow it down, too.
Slowing it down might not be bad, but then prices might come down a little.
That's true.
So we have that motion and we still have a second.
Yes, second.
And we need any other discussion?
So what is the motion, so I'm clear?
The motion is to proceed with 1.0 and the design and.
An estimate?
Say again?
One includes an estimate.
And one includes the estimate, right?
And reviewed by you.
Right. And then we'll, again, get together. If we need to meet, we're in a special meeting, we certainly can do that to make, make the project move forward quickly. And that's the motion, more or less. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Tows? My vote is aye.
All right. I don't have anything. You can take the time to read a couple items in the management report just to follow up on what the mayor mentioned earlier. As of today, we have 120 residents, subscribers, savvy citizens. So we do have digital assets as well as printed material on its way. So if we need any of those getting out to the businesses or anybody would like to share those on those social media pages, please let me know.
Did you say, Andrew, you can have signage, signs posted around your borough coming to alert people?
Yeah, we'll, right, we'll be able to post signs at trailheads, at parking lots. I already talked to a couple businesses that are willing to post, put some posters up. So again, that's just to try to reach as many people as possible.
And at the, at the concert in August, we were, we're going to have a booth there to sign people up and to help assist people if they haven't gotten, gotten it done by them. So that'll, that'll be good. Rex is going to do that.
One question about some of the IT upgrades and stuff like that. Is there any additional training that's needed for any of the Borough staff? Does he get used to any of the software or doing, doing anything different?
Pretty much just handling all the training in-house at this point.
Are you, are you going to discuss anything else on your report or are you?
Do you have any questions?
I have a question about Trail Towns.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, we were talking about crosswalks. When Kristen Phillips Hill was down and Trail Towns, we had also talked to them and included High Street because there was concern, some concern, quite a bit of concern because there are, there are a lot of kids up in your neighborhood, up in Logan and, you know, and that development that come over to include High Street in the crosswalk section and I don't see that on here.
Correct, yeah. At this point, what we're trying to look at is the focus on Maine and Franklin because of the paving that's going to occur on, on those streets. So that doesn't mean we're not taking a look at the other crossings as well, but the main focus right now will be on those two to get the improvements placed in conjunction with or before the paving schedule.
And that's through grant, their grant?
Yeah, the, your county, right, yeah. Your County Economic Alliance allocated funds to the different trail communities and one of the action items was for crossing improvements. And Maine and Franklin were definitely identified as, as having some concerns. So we're looking at having a design prepared that's a, basically a boilerplate for crossings along the trail in New Freedom. So they would all look the same. They would have the same thermoplastic crossings, they would have the same signage and a signal, flashing pedestrian signal if needed based on, based on traffic. So we're working on all those things at this point. Again, and that, that will be, we can use that boilerplate throughout the Borough at other intersections as well. Maybe not, you know, flashing pedestrian signal, but the same type of design to thermoplastic or the stamped inlay, whatever we come up with as the most cost-effective delineation of those crosswalks. So that's, that's in the works too, but we need those things to kind of move fast because of the paving. So it's all kind of working in parallel at this point.
There's crosswalks and they've been going many years. You can't even really tell there's a crosswalk there. So, okay, thank you for that update.
I have one quick thing on the Trail Towns. Tomorrow at five, they're having the announcement in Glen Rock on who wins the Bloom grants. They're going to have a press conference and the ruins all. And they came up with a note in that order this week.
I know, I know Glen Rock really got a lot, really got involved in that Trail Towns. What, I think they ended up getting like seventy or a hundred thousand dollars? They announced at the last council meeting.
Yeah, that, that might have been for businesses along the trail, but the actual Trail Town Action Committee, there was, I believe approximately thirty thousand dollars to each community. So I'm not sure. That might have had to do with other initiatives that they were doing to the business.
You said the ruins. I know they mentioned the ruins and that was coming in through Trail Towns.
Yeah, that's the Bloom grant for all the, all the businesses that put in.
That makes sense.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Solicitor?
Just an update. You approved at the last meeting, the 2021 general obligation notes, series A, B and C. We actually close them tomorrow. So tomorrow we'll be paying off the prior note and then you will have the ability then to draw down in each one of those notes for your water projects, your sewer projects and your general municipal projects. And I think we talked about one today. So tomorrow you will have funds available to you for all of those purposes.
Great, great. Do you have an update, Anne, on the CMS? Did you want to say anything about that?
I don't at this point. I think there was, I haven't here a truce with the council. Have Matt news? Use your microphone?
Microphone.
I don't have any comment?
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. And the engineering monthly progress report in Franklin and Maine?
Yeah, the, the only update on Franklin and Maine, the Water Street project, Kinsley will be on site this week to start curb and sidewalk replacement as well as handicap ramp install. And I believe the focus will be to address those along Constitution Avenue to get that paving followed up with that. So then they'll move to Franklin and Maine and coordinate that. So at this time, I know Kinsley will be doing the concrete work. I don't think we heard yet whether Kinsley won the bid on the paving. So that's the hope, obviously, so that things can flow and move forward a little quickly. But at this point, I think the hope is to have everything done by the end of June.
That would be Maine also or?
That would be the hope.
That would be the hope. All right.
I have one question on Boukart Horn's report for water system assistance for an upgrade to well for, they apparently, apparently they've reached out to DEP with some questions a couple occasions, haven't gotten any feedback and I just wonder if there's something else we can do, like call our state rep and ask or, you know, go shake the tree a little bit and find out what the holdup is because Boukart Horn can keep calling DEP and, and you know, we just, we're just making a big circle and we, you know, not getting any movement, not getting any place on the thing. So I don't know how council feels about it, but you know, that's one suggestion is to ask our state rep to go, you know, just shake the tree a little bit and find out what the, what the issue is. We're getting a response. I know it's, it, there's a COVID situation, but I assume they're still working one way or the other.
Is there anything else on the water system? wastewater?
Andy?
All right, question. Danny, I don't know if you can answer this one or maybe any Shaver can answer. When I look at the wastewater signal plant for April for total volume from New Freedom, just over eighteen million gallons. When I look at the water consumption report, New Freedom is only about seven and a half million gallons. Do we have an aye, an aye issue?
Uh, yeah. Simply, simply answer the question. And it's always, you know, I understand it, but they, I remember seeing some report items that they have been doing some TV and some inspections. Unfortunately, you need wet weather to do these things to try to find out where the leaks are and, you know, and April, for instance, we had less than an inch, at least my rain gauge had less than an inch after rain. But yeah, I mean, that's, you know, that's, that's right, Bruce. I mean, you got. I mean, you got, here's your amount of wastewater, here's your amount of water. And yeah, there's a, there's always a disparity. You'd like to narrow that gap as much as possible, but, um, yeah. Infiltration, influence, some kind of, you know, I don't know how to explain it.
I guess the wastewater, our, our numbers count railroad in there, right? I think where they joined right before the.
Yeah, River didn't have, that River doesn't have that many customers.
Right.
But maybe River, but it's, there's still, there's still a significant difference. And every, every time there's an opportunity, the wastewater guys should be out looking and that means wet weather. I mean, if it's dry, unless you run a TV camera down, you see some really obvious broken pipe, cracked pipe or something like that, you won't see much. I mean, wet weather, you can see if you've got a leak at the joint, you can see if you've got clear water coming in from somebody's lateral that may have a leak in it or may have a sump pump that's, you know, putting stuff into the system that shouldn't be. You really need wet weather. We, we didn't get it in April. March wasn't too bad and this one so far has been too bad either as far as wet weather's concerned. Yeah, that's what you have to do. It's, it's not easy thing to find. It sounds easy in theory, just go ahead and do that, but, um, yeah, it's, it's not an easy task.
Anything else on that? I would like to read one line from the wastewater report. It says, "Our local blacksmith fabricated a T-handle for staff to better access the tank drain belt on press number one." Probably don't have that in too many municipalities where the local blacksmith makes a toll. So I just, I just thought that was pretty cool.
And that's the new, that's the new press that by.
Yeah, yeah. Okay. Sounding in kind enforcement. That's the permit report. You said someone was here to talk about the house on third?
Well, yeah.
I mean, that's kind of resulting in an issue.
The latest thing is, um, there's a for sale sign on it now.
I'm sorry, wait.
A for sale sign on it.
Okay.
I guess three, four days ago. That's the only other thing, unless you guys have an update. I didn't hear anything else.
Yeah, that, I, we, we found that there is a bidding war going on right now to try to get the lot in the house. So we can't, you know, this is a process and it's kind of coming to, to an end. And hopefully it'll be a really good end too because whoever wins that is going to tear it down and at least start with the foundation, if not, if not replace the foundation as well. So I think the problem will resolve itself pretty quickly at that point now that someone's interested.
And just so you're aware, our answer to everyone that has been calling the office for questioning is that the first thing that they need to do is remove the violation, violation being the structure, and then provide temporary safeguards while they work to get new plans approved. So that's the first step and that's been our answer to everyone that's been calling in, which has been quite a few already today.
Anything else on that? Okay. Would you want to address the rep board?
There was a few items. They, they were looking to purchase a sound system. The sound system that was used, that was used previously was by, I think it was by Mr. Donahue, who has since passed away. They've lost some of the equipment in the move, so they're looking to spend eight hundred dollars on a sound system that can then be used for other events of the community center, whatever they have or whatever they need that would require a smaller system like this. They did have a question about the signs on the tennis court and if they were up there and if the signs are there, if the doors could be unlocked.
Oh, they, it's still locked?
Yeah.
I'm saying.
Yeah.
I don't, did you buy the other signs we were supposed to replace?
Yeah, I thought they were.
Have signs on all four doors that were the same?
Right, yeah, I know we talked about that. And Donnie, um, do you remember what we came up with there? I'm not deferring to you, I'm just trying to remember.
What we, what we had asked is that all the doors have the same signage because the problem is for police to enforce that if a kid goes in one of the doors with a skateboard or a bike and there's no sign there, they said, the kid says, wait a minute, I came in here with my skateboard. It doesn't say anything. So we need to be consistent on all the doors.
We'll take care of it.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you.
It helps the police to enforce that ordinance because we paid a lot of money for those, for that court.
I did ask them about the, I guess essentially a rec council endorsement for a skate park or a skate pad pertaining to skateboards. They are not in favor of it because of any potential liability in giving their approval on it regardless of the fact that it would be a separate entity leasing borough property and then signing any, any other insurance waivers or anything like that, however they wanted to operate. So they are not in favor of something like that. And the topic of cameras at the park came up again. One of the individuals on the rec council is going to, I guess, essentially put together a proposal or look into the feasibility of some cameras at the park. That's something that they're just doing on their own for right now. And I'll have more information on that at the next meeting next month. I believe that was all.
Andrew, what would be involved there? Would we have to put like Wi-Fi in that water house or something so we could get?
It depends on what, what, what type of system you.
Whether you're going to go with like a DVR recording or you're going to have.
Yeah, something like that or a wired system.
Yeah, so we could be, I don't know, like a motion detector at two in the morning or?
So I'd say we'll just.
See what he puts together.
See what they come up with and then go from there.
Other committees? You had, um, the Trail Towns, I guess you already talked about that. Were there any other committees that need a report? Anything from intergovernmental, Erica?
She's been in California for two months.
Oh, that's true.
But I've been, I've been going to the meetings. I've been going to the meetings and I really haven't had anything come up other than, you know, of course, Shrewsbury always wants to meet about the wastewater treatment plant and EDUs. And I know you had told me that there would be a meeting taking place. I guess that's still in the works.
I believe the last thing that was spoken was that Buck was going to get us a list of the questions and any information that he wanted to discuss. And that's the last email I received from him. I've not received any, any information from him since then. It's been three weeks.
Did somebody get an email from Raymire, Jeff Raymire? I got something from Jeff to Dave.
Yeah, but that was the request for the meeting.
For the meeting.
At which time I, I spoke with Buck and asked him to provide a list of the questions that he had and what they wanted to discuss. And that was the last that I got. And I think the email's still on my phone. I have to get a copy of it.
Yeah, if you could give me a copy of that because that, their meeting, I think, is this week.
Yeah, but I'm waiting on, it falls in his court if he wants to.
Well, I know he's gonna, I know Buck, he's going to ask me at the meeting.
He needs, again, he needs to go through the borough office for that. You can't, you can't really put, put you on the spot for things like that.
Right.
Because that's not fair to you. And he really has to contact Andrew and he's opened a line of communications with myself. So he's more than welcome to send me any information he has.
Very good. It's, I just, so I, we're all on the same page when I do the meeting.
Yeah. Yeah. They get blindsided.
Yeah.
Okay. That brings us to new business.
Schema? We voted to join Schema. Did we, have we been back in touch? Oops. Have we been back in touch with Stan Walters and issued them a check to join or?
Well, no, we didn't vote to join. You voted to authorize advertisement of the ordinance.
That's right.
Yeah, so Todd Ziegler and I, from Shrewsbury Township, have been in communication. He's doing a little bit of research to see whether or not it needs to be an ordinance changed by the other municipalities as well, or if it can just be an ordinance by New Freedom Borough to join and then change the, I guess, articles of agreement or whatever the governing agreement is between the other municipalities. So we're just waiting on a little bit of information from Todd. But again, you've already authorized advertisement. So the next step would be for us to make sure that whatever ordinance New Freedom is going to adopt will match what the others have already adopted. Make sure everybody's on the same page and then hopefully we can get that on the agenda for June or July at this point.
So now, it, as of now, it hasn't been advertised?
Correct, because we don't have an ordinance at this point.
Okay.
So we're in the process though. Okay. Okay. The first I'd want new business is to consider approval of the request to provide fire police services to Shrewsbury Borough for the Fireman's Carnival.
I'll make that motion.
First and the second, any discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Puzzled? My vote is aye. And then consider approval of a request to provide fire police services to Fong Grove Borough for 2021 special events as listed, which I believe was the, the carnival as well. But I'm not sure that there was a, was there anything else on that list? It's just the carnival, right?
Yeah, pray.
I was going to say.
I'll make the same motion.
Make the same second.
All in favor? Puzzled? My vote is aye.
Can I, can I address the, the fire company? I don't know if they had a, a special meeting. I haven't been able to give their, their Thursday meetings because of other obligations. But in, in talking to the president of the fire company, I don't think they're going to be doing the fish fries any longer. They've lost so much money in the last year to pick up two or three thousand dollars in doing the fish fry. Their fryers are shot. So unless we want to donate two fryers at about eight thousand dollars, they're going to have to forego the fish fry, which is a shame because it was a great way to get, to get residents together. I mean, we used to have three, three hundred and fifty people show up for that. I really hate to see it go. Maybe down, down the line, they can pick it up again. But as of now too, there's a lot of problems with, not problems, for tasteful occasions. I think the one date they were going to have a fish fry, tasteful occasions had three weddings planned. So there's really no kitchen for the fire company to use to have the fish fry.
I think tasteful occasions was actually going to move upstairs from those days. I think you worked it out.
Yeah, yeah, they were going to work it out. There was no issue.
That's not the reason. I mean, tasteful occasions has been more than cooperative.
Oh, I know. Yes, they've even gone over to the firehouse and used that. But my understanding was that they had three in one day and there was no way they could possibly.
No, I, I worked that out with them. That was all, that was all taken care of and that was the one in September.
Yeah, well, I don't think it's going to happen. Did you relay that to the fire company?
Absolutely, yeah. Everything, we, we took care of communicating between tasteful occasions and the fire company at this point. They had the, the fire company had reserved the use of the kitchen. Tasteful occasions had a couple weddings. They were both going to work together and adapt and make it work.
Okay, I'll go back and see if they changed their mind and maybe you and I can talk about it and see who you discussed that with tomorrow.
Kim Hernandez.
No, 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 from the fire department.
I think it was Lisa, right? It was Lisa.
See, Lisa's not really in charge.
No one, no one else calls me, so.
Okay, all right.
She, she is the easiest one to get ahold of.
Okay, all right. Yeah, I just, I talked to the president and he said they're, they don't think they're going to do it anymore.
Okay.
I'll get you a definite.
Okay. Lease agreement with Comcast even?
Yeah, this is for the property across the street from the wastewater treatment plant. The current lease expires at the end of twenty-two. This is the same lease that is currently in effect. However, this has some renewal terms built in. The initial proposal was for a pretty low amount of an increase. However, we went back and negotiated about a twenty-five hundred dollar a year initial increase. So the current rate is five thousand a year. This would jump that to seventy-five hundred a year with a thousand dollar increase then in, in the next renewal terms, which obviously would be as needed, but they're pretty much outlined on page two. So really, there's no, this isn't a property that would need to be used by a borough and the facilities for Comcast are already there. So pretty much makes sense to move forward with the current lease agreement.
I'm just, I'm curious from a background standpoint, is, is going out on like renewal terms dot com going up to twenty fifty-one? I mean, I don't know, you can negotiate anything you want, you can go out and definitely.
Yeah. Uh, I would say it was a little unique, but it's something that they wanted to make sure that they were going to continue the use of the property as, as needed, if, if those renewal terms come into play.
I need, need a motion for that.
I'll make a motion that we accept the Comcast lease agreement as, as stated.
First, for now, seconds, the motion. Any other further discussion on that? All in favor?
Aye.
Puzzled? My vote is aye. Okay. And we already ratified a thousand dollars for the thing, so consider approval of a resolution adopting a fee schedule. Now, this fee schedule doesn't really change any fees. Andrew put together a fee schedule so that we would have all of our fees in one place and, and we would have a resolution that we could update and whenever we needed to change fees. So this really is just a consolidation of all the fees.
Yeah, correct. This, this is just to get everything in one document for use by office staff and the public. Normally, this would be something that we would do during the budget process in December. So you'll probably see a very similar resolution in, in December as we look to the twenty-twenty-two budget. But this was basically to clean everything up. Again, there are no change in the fees. The only update would be the schedule of fees as it relates to the need for the borough to lean a property should they become delinquent on water, sewer and refuse bills. And those are just pass-through fees at that point.
So this would be up on our website then for somebody to see the whole fee schedule?
Yeah, we'll make it.
As a resolution, yeah.
Now, we had the ordinance. I was just talking to Solicitor. I think we approved an ordinance last year with fee schedules in it that are very similar to this.
I couldn't recall.
You wouldn't, you wouldn't do it by ordinance because all of these are referenced by resolution.
Right, but I think it was by ordinance. I haven't even recalled.
There was no budget, there was no reference to that in all the budget documents. You might, you might have did a tax resolution. Um, you might, you might have did a tax resolution, or, well, if you increased, it would have been a tax ordinance.
Well, it had all these in it. I just didn't know if we had to do something with that old ordinance before we do the resolution, before rescinding the old ordinance.
But nothing changes any of our current fees, so this is really just a snapshot, and it puts everything in one spot.
Very good.
I think we're okay with that.
And I guess, it, before we increase any fees or decrease it, we'll need to verify whether that was done by ordinance.
Right.
An ordinance trumps a resolution, and therefore, if you're gonna change that, we, we need to make sure we're doing it correctly.
Oh, that's why I?
Or, or at least just referencing here that ordinance, whatever is being rescinded, and all fees provided herein are authorized to be adopted by resolution. I said to the mayor, typically, an ordinance, when you have a fee, says it may establish a fee, but which, which typically says, which may be amended from time to time by resolution of borough council.
Right, and that's, every single one of those references in there are referenced by, from an ordinance that say the fee can be adopted by resolution from time to time by borough council.
I move we adopt the, uh, the fee schedule.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? My vote is aye.
Number what at the end, Andrew? Twenty twenty-one dash?
I believe four, but I'll check on that.
Do we have to sign that tonight? The resolution, do you need signatures on that tonight?
It, it should be signed tonight, yes, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, then Freedom Fest has requested a street closure on September eighteenth, and that would be for Freedom Fest, which, it's good that we're having it again.
I'll make a motion that we approve the street closure request that was, has been previously submitted for the Freedom Fest.
Second.
Okay, motion in a second, any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose? My vote is aye. Okay, uh, fund balance policy. Um, this is something that, um, that we need to do, just to make sure that we have enough operating capital, it's a, it's, um, it's like, you said, sixteen point seven percent?
Right, yeah, thi- this kind of, uh, sets a, a guideline for maintaining adequate fund balances, specifically in the general fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. And what it does is it, uh, withholds, uh, a reserve balance annually based on your revenues, and that is sixteen point seven percent. Where that number comes from is your, uh, basically a quarter. Uh, so a calendar quarter of your revenues is always held in your fund balance as, as reserved, uh, and that's basically to plateau any, any losses or, you know, another pandemic or, or other emergencies that would arise. Uh, and the other thing that does is establishes, uh, money as an emergency fund in the water and sewer. So in addition to the reserve balance of sixteen point seven percent, there's another hundred thousand in sewer fund and another fifty thousand in the water fund, and that's outlined in the policy. And again, it's just a, a general financial good practice to maintain those fund balances at that rate moving forward.
I would entertain a motion, uh, to establish the fund balance policy for the borough.
Motion that we adopt the, uh, the resolution for the fund balance policy.
Aye, second.
Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
My vote is aye. My vote is aye. Okay, um, I don't, there's no need for an executive session that I know of, so.
Yeah.
Sorry?
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting.
Uh, well, any public comment? I don't think anyone is waiting for anything particular?
Do you have anything, any questions for the police department, or, I know I just?
Um, we, we already had the, had the, I think we're, I think we're okay. Does anyone have any questions for? No? Thank you for coming.
Well, you're gonna need to tell me the thousand dollar, uh?
Yeah, we, yeah.
We ratified the thousand dollars for the, um, for the reward money.
What was he talking about? What's that thing? Now, this one, we'll have to set it separate. Okay. Um.
I'll make a motion that we adjourn the meeting. I'll, 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 I'll claim something later.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.